I'm here at a dungeon in Chelsea about to go meet Lucy and Puppy to watch one of their BDSM play sessions.
Martin, would you go over there?
And I think what's gonna happen is that essentially she's gonna whip him into a state of transcendence.
You know the land, sorry, just going about that land at the top.
This one?
Right, that one is outside the neighbourhood, that's Dog Kennel Cottage.
Six thirty five on the eighth of March twenty twenty three. Apologies and reasons for absences. Okay. And here are letters and children. Bye. And then Paul Woodston's not on. Okay. Do we have a proposal? Are we gonna do them all in block? Thank you. Your own second up. All those in favour? Unanimous. Declarations of members' interests. Do we have any interests this evening? Alright, deputations from the members of the public. Do we have any deputations this evening, guys?
Sorry to disappoint.
Oh.
When you do, so.
Thank you. Are you not gonna say anything tonight, Mr Woodson?
No.
Oh, well, just checking. Right. Number four, minutes to confirm the accuracy of the merit minutes for the meeting held on the twenty second of February. Is everybody happy with them? Do we have a proposal? Are they here? Yeah, you're gonna get shot. Did you get that on the camera? Right, okay, I'll sign them tomorrow when I'm down here. Okay, so...
These are both on, don't they?
Yes. So do we have a proposal? Would you like a proposal? Thank you. Seconded, by? Thank you. All in favour? Number five, countless questions. Do we have any questions this evening?
We're ready to play it. It's written, yeah.
It's not, because it's not in standing orders. Anyway. Park report. Have you got anything to report, Martin? I said that's a no. Chairman's report. I've been at the bear. I've been, I was invited to the launch at the Queen's Statue fundraising event at the castle. Twenty eighth of February, and on Friday just gone, I was at a parish council summit with Alicia Q. Coons. I never get it right, do I? As you may have noticed this evening, I also just like to point out that Darren has now left in employment with us, and Pathy's standing in at the moment. Okay, thank you. Number eight, to receive and consider reports from members, working groups and outside bodies. So we've got an update on the events of how much we've spent so far. So we've budgeted four thousand two hundred spent. So we've still got a chunk left.
Can I ask respectfully?
Whatever you like.
Yeah. We had similar last month. So are the brands that you've got, is this an update on last month's?
Yeah, because last month was only two thousand eight.
It's a broken programme.
So what, that's what I wanted to clarify, that we aren't actually receiving a broken programme. Can I ask respectfully?
Yes.
That we actually include a certain amount remaining on the budget?
Yes, we did mention that, but we couldn't...
Yeah, I know, I know. But I just think it's something that we have to go through, how we're doing.
No, we need to work out how to put it onto this.
Oh, I can do that for you. Send the Excel.
Okay. Christmas decorations, decorations out of hours payment. We had this meeting last time. We've broken it down a bit more for you to have a look through. Has anybody got anything more to say? That's a mix.
Who's the timers? Are they ours or theirs?
Ours, I believe.
We painted them.
And we brought two thunder bombs back in. Anybody got anything else?
All right, now we're gonna avoid this kind of thing coming here. Because I mean, this basically, we're getting, somebody's gonna hang all the lights, and then something that's just on the edge of those lights, there's Roman.
Yeah, we did have a meeting with the Christmas tree light provider, and he highlighted a few things that we really need to get sorted before next year. Like, the switch on the angler is powering the lights outside angler as well as the Christmas lights. So when the Christmas lights are on and the angler turn on their lights, the power goes off on the Christmas lights. So he's pointed out quite a few little things like that, that we've got a list of, and we're gonna get sorted. And it's been structured, but we need to give it some structure. As far as the Hudson's Cottage problem, I think we should just forget about using that in future, because that just seems to be such a headache, that quarter.
So how are we gonna pick this up, next question? How do we propose to pick up all the changes and fixes and things to be done? Are we gonna ensure that happens, in other words?
Yeah, yeah, well, we can bring the paper back with all the things that need doing and costings.
Can we put that in here, so we accept, you know, that we actually voted to accept the charges or not, and then actually there will be a paper brought back by whoever, who member?
It's here.
Your good sir, is it Martin?
I might not be.
Because that, because, so basically, is this an amendment, the contract was agreed, or not?
No. This was the contract that was agreed.
Okay, so I'm just wondering why it's on the paper, because when we're going through the accounts, we appear to have actually spent forty thousand pounds to first product this year, for what was actually a twenty eight thousand pound product, twenty eight thousand pounds service. So I'm just wondering, we seem, we incurred extra charges when they did some amendments on the Victoria Hall, and we brought in special lights. Yes, it all looks great, but I'm just concerned that at this stage, why are they bringing this up? How can we avoid incurring these charges? Because in effect, we're just sort of saying, yeah, all right, yeah, we'll pay whatever. But that potentially is gonna take, this is gonna be another sort of fifteen hundred, two thousand pound bill on what is already a contract which is ten thousand pounds over budget.
Well, we don't know that yet, and that's what we suspect.
Well, it's here, but it's really black.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying that we've yet to... That is our initial impression.
I can read it there if you want.
I just think it'd be prudent to make sure that we revisit that.
Yeah?
Or would it be a good idea to actually go through the contract that's in the office?
No. I think when we get the paper coming back, I would suggest...
I like the idea of that being Hudson's Cottage last place. It's been a problem for years.
I like the idea of actually bringing the paper back to council with the changes and the breakdown of the costs that we can't incur this year.
Okay. But maybe together with the contract, just to make sure that the council know that it isn't something that is actually included in the contract. I think that's one of the things that I was not completely sure. I think that's because we haven't seen the original, and I wasn't here. So I'm sure everyone else did, but it seems one of those add-ons, that if it is legitimate and we have signed up originally, then that's fair. But it's whether actually it is something that we should have included in our original scheduled agreement with them. So I think councillor Ainsley's suggestion...
Was the full contract, or full council?
Full contract. Yeah, the original contract, council originally signed off the contract, three-year contract of twenty eight thousand pounds.
On the last year this year.
Or twenty five hundred.
And that's why it's a problem. When it comes to the renewal.
So Chris is basically saying that we're incurring charges because what we don't believe is our problem, which was costing us fourteen hundred pounds potentially. We're agreed to say that we're gonna write that off and we'll accept seven hundred pounds. That's how I interpret this paper.
Yes.
Concerned the fact that some of the issues surrounding the installations to do with the timers wasn't actually done by Chris's team. It was done by another organisation, wasn't it?
Yes.
Was that group that we commissioned, or that...
We had to commission it, because we were desperate this year.
We were desperate, or they were desperate?
Although we were.
Sounds like us. Okay. Well, it sounds like we've sort of got an invoice that we're gonna have to resolve, but we need to make sure we don't incur additional costs at the end of this year?
Yes.
Because we haven't budgeted for it.
No.
Yes, perhaps a full breakdown of the costs that I would suggest that thus far would be.
I'm honestly very, that has to full breakdown of the costs that we've incurred so far. I'd like to see the changes that we're proposing for the following year. Yeah. And the, well, that's it, really?
Yeah.
Those two items.
And obviously then we're proposing to accept Chris's offer that if we settle these issues for seven hundred pounds as well. Because we resolved that today, then that comes out of this year's budget anyway.
You've got plenty in the budget to settle this?
We've got reserves this year carrying forward, so. Because it only comes out because there's nothing...
I don't wanna correct myself.
There's nothing left in the Christmas budget.
I don't believe that we have some significant work to do to actually understand what exactly happened with the accounts.
Yes.
Yes, we do have.
So my initial hour, initial impression is that no, it's not within budget, so we'll treat it from there.
So it was a free pair from one of the...
What the hell is?
From the reserve, well, they're based on the reserve.
As long as there's no, because I'm assuming just that we've got this means that there's no way of us evidencing that it's not fair for us to pay this, because otherwise this paper wouldn't be here. Because we have, yeah, so.
Basically, we called them out, we asked them to do anything, these things haven't been their problem at search, and that's why they are asking us to pay extra money.
If you don't want to. I'm being a hundred percent transparent here on what we've discovered.
Okay, so I'm proposing seven hundred pounds plus the added.
I would happily propose that, based on also what Paul said, that we bring back a further paper, which would probably be with the new council, and to look at whatever he said a minute ago.
The breakdown of costs, and the changes that we're proposing for the following year.
And so we're gonna pay for seven hundred pounds.
Yes, and we should vote to pay for seven hundred.
And so Chris won't break it, yes. Who calls them out?
Sorry?
Who calls them out? We.
We being?
The council. The office.
The office, the clerk.
The office.
The clerk.
No, it gets reported by a member of the public, or councillor goes, your lights are broken. They're in here, the clerk will then call them out.
Okay, so councillor Lo is proposing another second up, thank you. Councillor Ainsley, all those in favour, paying? Thank you. And that gets that one out of the way, and then we can start fresh with it. Okay, eight point four, a few, councillor Ainsley.
Thank you very much indeed. London County, hopefully we'll have a chance to read the paper. We, London County Council, in the course of developing their local plan, have done a call for sites, which simply means they've gone out to developers at Al to actually say, where might you want to develop within? And we're obviously primarily concerned with the Oakham and Barlitthorpe, although not that actually, Barlitthorpe to be honest, nonetheless.
They have got their own.
They have their own council, precisely. So what I'm bringing here is simply a diagram, which is up there on the board, of the call for sites that have been proposed for, by developers at Al, and by the individuals, landlords and developers that I was looking for. And we will, we've been invited to comment on those developments. Now, I just sent out an email about a week before we got the papers, and I did actually give you the website link, so hopefully you've had a chance at least to have a look for your own particular ward. And what we need to be doing at this stage is to completing a document which actually also went out with the email and with the papers, to actually submit back to London County Council detailing our observations on those sites, of those nine sites that are up there. I can go through them individually if you wish.
Yeah. Is it, sorry to interrupt, is it worth just clarifying that they've not got planning permission already?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I think just in case anyone has a...
No, there isn't, this has no, there's no weight in planning on these sites. So this is, so for example, the plot.
Some of them have been previously identified as residential allocations.
They have, but they have, these, as submitted, have no weight in planning.
Yeah.
So what happens is we come back with our recommendations and observations, using our extremely good local knowledge, completing the form that they have requested us to fill in, and then what happens is it goes out to public consultation. So this is our opportunity to get in there, the block in the middle, right in the centre of town, there's Tim Ford.
And then, and obviously, as Paul's gonna talk you through that, one thing he's gonna be bringing to your attention is that we must take into account the Oakham and Barlitthorpe neighbourhood plan.
Yes, and I also, thank you very much for that. I was gonna go out there and say simply, there's also an additional paper, which actually shows the output from the neighbourhood plan, that was the last neighbourhood plan. That needs to be revisited in the light of the sites and recent developments. And so that is also included on the website, for those who've had a look at those papers. So can I quickly go through this? There is an awful lot of information about each site, there are some that have got a particular interest. It's just landing there. Hey! Yeah. So if I can, so if we go on to the first one, which is where that black blob is, can you all see? Shall I stand up?
You can stand up before, yeah, because I'm not...
I must stand up.
I've not got my glasses, do you want to stick on distance?
No, I can manage it. So this, oh, all we're talking about is this piece of land here.
Yes, where's that?
That's the, look at that, western main road, Barlitthorpe, Oakham. So you can see, this is the centre of Oakham, so it's right up at Barlitthorpe.
So that's the mini roundabout where you go straight over towards Lango, or you go right around the bypass?
That's the one that we went to look at at Victoria Hall.
That's the, that's the one, that's the one where the developer is hoping to develop and maybe prepare for land to escape on.
What we need to do is, I've forgotten the date, it's on the paper, the date we're gonna get these back to London County Council.
Yesterday, what?
Friday.
Friday. So what I'm hoping is that you'll take these away, have a good think about your particular ward and any others that you have any interest in, and we'll submit these papers.
I was gonna propose a Google Docs, if you're able to collate things on.
Just email me and I'll put it together. You've got your time.
That sounds good for me.
So in relation to that piece of land there, which you pointed out, Paul, the last piece on the left, even though it is outside of the neighbourhood plan that we drew up...
That's irrelevant at this stage.
I know that, well, I'm making people aware, because, well, it's irrelevant to you maybe, but it's not irrelevant to people that did the neighbourhood plan. So they will want to know what we have to say. So I also don't have a problem, so in other words, if a developer wanted to go ahead with that, from my perspective, I wouldn't have an issue with it personally.
Is the neighbourhood plan still on?
Yes.
I just took a check in, because...
It has to be, yes.
Well, the thing is, the local plan is being withdrawn, the neighbourhood plan was a part of that local plan, so the status of the neighbourhood plan is uncertain whether it's still effective.
It is, it is effective, because the local plan has been accepted, so the local plan's gonna have to step in line, end on.
You do like the plan.
What needs to happen?
You county councillors need to get a grip.
I don't need to get a grip. What needs to happen, dear heart, is that the neighbourhood plan needs to be revised, and that revised neighbourhood plan needs to be submitted back for the new developing local plan.
Yeah, yes, it has to.
So I've got a second motion which will cover it in just a second, okay? So if you go on to the next slide, please.
It's not moving.
Just scroll through the page, paper.
Yep, go down.
Well, we're gonna get it now.
It's a PDF, so...
It's up there now.
Is that just on an email?
No, it was, it did move, but it...
Right.
Okay. Let's, we just have to accept, what I'd like to happen here...
So I'll come out and go back in.
I don't wanna waste too much time on this.
No. So those little bits of land that's on there whilst we're just sitting here, do you want to just pinpoint where I...
Yeah, I thought you were just gonna go through each piece.
I was.
Yes.
That was the plan.
If you have the one, if you have the one...
I'll take it, I'll just fail it.
You have multiple images there?
Yes.
They're all by me, by me.
Oh, so we need to save them, because Paul's, I'm making them.
I couldn't care less. What I want is...
Like that?
What I want is your comments, that's the most important thing. Usually a localised is, and the fact that you've got, it's a PDF which has got all the slides in it.
Yeah.
I have a printed copy, yeah.
It's just not moving. Right, let's just concentrate on that one.
You're here to have about five copies of the same thing open?
So if you just leave the other one open, I'll just talk through it by using my printed copy.
I don't know if that's what you're gonna do, I really don't, because that computer's bad, what you use is...
Okay, if you just go back to the original? You can?
Yes, you can.
Alt-Tap will take you back in as you've closed it.
Or just go to that icon that looks like a green and blue eyes.
This reminds me of the good old days.
Reminds me of the old days.
What's the right style?
There you go, that's the one. Okay, so this one now. So this one.
Yeah.
So this is, its description is simply land at Uppingham Road, and it's for housing, that's as much of a description I've got, but we are talking about this site here. So this looks to me, well, does everybody reckon that where it is?
Is it Dog Kennel Cottage area?
Yes.
I think it is, yes.
Yes, that little white track that goes up to the right, it goes towards Dog Kennel Cottage. That is also outside of the neighbourhood plan that you discussed.
Yeah, okay. The next one along is again just land, it's just called Land of Uppingham Road, and that again is just aptly described by Adam, which is Dog Kennel Cottage.
It's just around the big co-op, I think.
No, they can't be all set, so they can't prove that to me.
Exactly. So I welcome your comments for those whose ward that is, yeah? If you just email me and I'll complete the form and send it off to London County Council. This one here, down the bottom right-hand corner, is just simply called Land of... Martin, would you go over there? Martin, would you just go over there, I've always wanted to do this.
So, sorry.
Who's a naughty girl?
You know the land, sorry, Paul, just going about that land at the top, which is...
This one?
Right, that one is outside the neighbourhood, that's Dog Kennel Cottage, slightly right of that, that funny-shaped piece of land, that has been previously identified as residential allocation, just the one around the co-op. So that was, that was accepted by the neighbourhood planners, no issue, and I think that moving forward, they're gonna be no issue.
So what we're saying so far is that we believe there is no issues for these top three, is that what we're saying?
I would, yeah, Oakham Town Council, and I believe our neighbourhood plan, if we were to re-approach it, we would align with those, because in actual fact, they are not, they're not too disastrous, there's not too much development on the north side, because those two little ones on the right of the north, and the one on the left is obviously Barlitthorpe. Barlitthorpe will have water saved and we will...
Absolutely. We don't have to comment, we can sort everything out by the neighbourhood plan.
It's when we get around to the, it's when we get around to the bottom.
Quite.
Then it's gonna get a bit scary.
It's gonna surround the co-op.
Where is this? They don't wanna.
So going on round to the bottom.
Yep.
Land at Stafford Grove, this is how it's described, residential area.
Yeah. So that's gonna be Catlers Park Road, is the field to the front of Catlers Park Road, which is currently empty. That's that first top piece of brown land. And obviously, you should go further out to the east, so you'll stick and move towards Marty, and be heading towards the sewage works. So that gives you an idea of location-wise, but there is no development by the neighbourhood plan for any of that first brown chunk.
And sometimes that's cheap.
Well, do we project to that piece of land?
So once again, when you look at that, from a, from a point of view of how the town would develop as an infill, it wouldn't seem to be inappropriate. It would seem to be more appropriate.
Well, I wonder slightly about the fact that, where is the sewage works on here?
Put your stick up.
It's about here, isn't it?
No, up, up, now go slightly towards the window. Top, there.
There.
It's about there.
It can be stinky territory occasionally down there.
So the thing is, you've got, you've said Catlers Park Road residents would probably be up in arms, and also you've got lots of agricultural fields there, but they all are at least on the inside of bypass, because the bypass is that nice curve, yeah?
Well, the residents will get the opportunity at the next stage.
But it does, that fits better than some of the other bits.
Okay.
It's not past the...
No.
Absolutely not, no, this is, this is the time for our comments, and by completing the form that they've said that we have to complete...
That's right, it's decided, it's up to the public.
What that does there, that, that come on your stick?
Anything.
That block there will literally lock in the Stafford Grove and Catlers Park Road, because that's Stafford Grove, isn't it? So that locks them all in, so they'll be very, very unhappy.
Yes.
So, but from a planning perspective, it makes the Oakham look a little bit better shape. You know, if you're gonna build it all out here, it'd look odd, wouldn't it? So that does blend well. This area here, this is as we're coming down Uppingham Road, that section, I believe, is already being built on, isn't it? Yeah? And then what it is there now, even beyond there, they wanna take it right up to where is the Oakham and Bloom?
Can you just show me where that comes on?
So that area is, it would be being built on, so there was a development done there originally by Cheekens Way? Cheekens Way did the first development.
Spiny Hill.
Spiny Hill, now there's another development down on the back end, but they also want to go beyond that into this area here, which brings you right up to the point where the bypass joins the old Uppingham Road, which is where the Oakham and Bloom were their bicyclists. So that's that point there.
They won't go all the way, because there's a pile on.
Exactly, yes, there's a pile of...
Because they're not allowed to be all under them anymore.
And then, of course, then that is a huge development there, and that all, that's all...
I've got lots of objections for that bottom one.
Have you? What, that one there?
So there's, very, there's southernly.
Always objections behind that.
So I've done a walkability website, and it's very far for people to walk from there, which is, it will be on reproaching across, which means most likely everyone will have cars, and it's the wrong side of the railway track.
If you...
So I could email you all of them.
Well, I'll tell you what, much more useful actually, is if, if you have a look at their form, that's what London County Council wanted to submit it on, there's a whole series of headings.
I can do, I can do the entire one, but for that very southernly one, and if anyone's got any additional objections, how about I collate those, and then email it back to yourself?
Sure. Do you wanna have a look at this form?
I'll do that, yeah.
Got all the headings, so yeah, good stuff.
That bit of land that you're on about, isn't it?
Yeah, a big, a big triangle at the bottom.
Are they trying to build on that with dogfishes?
Okay.
They keep getting rejected.
So not used to it down there, it feels good. They were trying to do it there.
So do we have any other comments about that thin sliver in the middle there?
It's already being built on.
Yes.
It would seem to be a natural evolution of the building development.
So we don't have any particular comments, and this one Hannah's gonna deal with?
This one that Hannah's gonna deal with, because that one there, that's the one which is on Rawston Road. Now, this is where they're building on the opposite side, they're building on just south of that big brown chunk, put your stick up, just come down. Right, that's where the developer is currently building. And that there is the one where the developer wants to build, where there's already been a huge public outcry.
That has already been deemed as unsuitable.
That's it, yes, and in fact...
I will deal with that one.
Yes, all right, okay, fine, I'm glad you said that.
So what's the little tiny thing in the middle of the town?
Ten Norton.
Ten Norton.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's...
That's another thing that's at the bottom of it.
At the bottom as well, yeah. Literally there.
Well, they're gonna put a supermarket there, aren't they?
I've done some research, so walked through it, there are nice trees in the middle, so that's something we can talk about. And it is a tight corner.
Which ward is this, just south, isn't it?
South, yes.
Oh, no, it's not there, I'm not south.
Where's that?
I'm north east.
You and I are south, aren't we?
No.
Fourteen Norton's been...
I'm in your face, you're south, I think.
Does nobody know what they are? I'll tell you what's...
Well, that's up for Rita.
They made him do it.
Just tell me, just do one of those.
And they're lovely little houses on the corner there.
I'm north east. I know what I am.
Oh, sorry, yes.
You're ballers.
Yeah, both of us are here.
It's too small the site for a street market.
I imagine you've got a lot of...
Residential, which in Norton is, I can't...
I don't, I'm just, the development plan, was it residential or...
The, the one I'm thinking of would be the pressures on the, um-
Crossing.
Crossing precisely.
I thought, I, because they're going to put a supermarket there.
There was a issue.
One, one issue.
Well, he's intended to push this forward from residential, that's what, that's what he's doing.
Oh, right, okay, he would put pressure forward, because maybe it could turn out to be Bridge Over the World.
That was discussed, wasn't it?
I have, I can't, I won't comment on that one.
The people this side of that bridge, our first told me this years ago, and she was the councillor, she said, this side of that railway has always been the underdog, and we never, they never got treated properly in them, so she and her, her, was the one that got a bus to come to this area when she was there. Though I don't know about that corner, I think it's a very dodgy area, all together first, isn't it?
Okay.
Okay, right.
So what we need to, so does anybody got a pick up on Ten Norton?
I'll have to do that one as well, if no one else has.
Don't forget, I'll get it all done by Friday, haven't I?
Yeah, and I really, I will pull it together, but it'd be useful if you could actually refer to this form, which is actually in, in your pack and all on that website. eight dot four dot two.
What do you get about that little?
Little swiggy bit up there?
Yeah, but that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's-
I-
That's, that's been refused already, hasn't it?
Yes.
That one under the pile on just past Hill?
Yes, Hilltop, isn't it?
It's, it's currently only allowed to have farming structures on it.
Yeah.
Which is not included in the farmhouse.
No, I know.
And it's tidy, and it's, there's very, I think people on Hilltop are very happy about it.
Definitely, I've been saying this.
So I think that would be rejected, because it would just, it would-
Well, we need to put forward our objections, don't we?
I think it already came to council, because there was a developer that actually proposed to, developer that already was-
Yes.
Yeah, but he's-
He's pulled out of there.
They've pulled it out of there.
So, but there's no reason at all why they can't actually push the sites forward again for consideration.
Do you, do you feel that you've captured all of our views on all of the other bits?
No, I was just going to do a recap.
Okay, go.
So when we get, we're still, but-
Do you want me to point where you write?
No. You write, no, I'll write, yes, please, that'd be really helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it?
On that bit of land there, then, what are you going to do?
I think that's going to be referred to Barleythorpe.
Yes, because in actual fact, Barleythorpe were on about doing their own neighbourhood plan as well.
Well, they're, are they separate from us? Well, that's their decision, but I think, I don't think we as a council-
So we'll leave that one up for Barleythorpe to decide.
Quite.
You're going to write that down on?
Don't you worry.
We finish it, we've got two hours.
They didn't contribute anything.
This piece of land here, which we'll call as, uh, the Dog, Dog Kennel Cottage, whatever you want to refer to it.
I, I personally have no particular objection to that.
No, I mean, it's, it's on the outside of the bypass, but in actual fact, it does fit in with this sort of line, because you can almost see it coming over, can't you?
It is quite close to the Oakham Canal project, I think it's slightly to the, your path.
Further around, isn't it?
Uh, I think you've got to be very careful with that, because that's what we're up against at the moment.
Yeah, we've got, yeah, the canal is, there is.
The canal runs, runs around houses and-
But that's not what you're describing, Adam, that, if that's-
That's, that's Dog Kennel Cottage there, on that thing there, but that's a huge chunk of land.
Which is up by the canal.
Yeah.
I don't think we should do anything near that.
There's something.
Because that's, no, that's the rail, no, that's the railway line there, and the railway line runs-
Yes, it's underneath the bed.
You sure you've got that right?
Yeah, pretty well, I think so, I could be wrong, I could be now, I've read about it once.
Now, this is the co-op here, isn't it?
That's definitely the co-op.
That's the co-op.
That's the co-op, so this is not Dog Kennel, because Dog Kennel's around here.
Yes.
It is.
Is it? Oh, okay, this should be off.
So this is the-
That's not birdie.
Is this the canal, we're saying, this is the railway line, isn't it?
That's the railway line. Railway line runs by the canals.
I think that's the old hotel.
Springfield.
But nonetheless, I, I, I personally don't have any objection to that one.
Because I've been in-
Yeah, you actually might, yeah, join the council. So you think that's the, that, that would put that, the Springfield just there, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
There, no, Springfield would be there.
It's where all those fortunate clients are.
The vets are there, isn't it?
There's tall super councils.
That means the Dog Kennel Cottage goes up there somewhere then, doesn't it?
No, Dog Kennel Cottage is right there, is it not, there, it's the other side of the surrounding, that's where it is.
Super, okay, cool, in that case, that's-
This is the co-op area.
So that goes to Ashwell.
So what is that one?
That goes up to the prison, doesn't it?
Yeah, uh, no, that goes up, no. That's the one to the HMP Stockton, you're talking about, oh no, you're talking about-
Ashwell Prison.
Yes.
So that goes right to the little, so Martin's right, that is Springfield.
Yes, exactly.
And that is right on top of-
So here we have it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the old hotel, and there was a dog, there's a cattery, I think it's confusing, it's, it's opposite the vets, isn't it? Yeah, because I ran through the, the, the old Dog Kennel, guest house.
Next road, mini roundabout, next to-
No, it's not the showground, it's Oakland, Oakland Sports Ground. That's, that's-
Oakland Hockey Pitch, you said.
This is the canal.
That must be the playing for us.
That's Oakland, that's Oakland Sports Ground.
I point out the hospital, it comes off that mini roundabout, right there.
Yeah.
That's the vet hospital there, so it's Ashwell Road, just running to you.
You're right, Tom, you're right, yeah, because he is right, by saying the canal runs up on the left.
So the-
I suppose the idea of allocating land in advance is better than waiting.
Yeah.
In theory, it's better.
That takes some school play.
In some ways, it could have been.
Speculative developments, I suppose.
But I was sure last-
We're sorting out all the resources to cover what we've got.
No, that's the problem.
So you'll speak back with your notes here, the impact on the canal, which is being developed.
We should be developing-
No infrastructure.
No, that's the issue.
Okay, what, right?
That's the issue.
Thorting out the downtown.
That's the next ten years, we should have that.
Well, that's the issue.
More water that will be coming up.
We, we have to respond to these developers and landowners and individuals who've put forward.
So you captured that as the-
I've captured that.
That wraps the canal.
Yes.
That, that's already up within-
That wraps the co-op, doesn't it, I captured it.
No issue with that, so then you're coming down to the Stamford Road area.
Yeah.
And across the front of Catlers Park Road.
Um, I believe to the big, like, let's start with the easy bit, you just, the big lump at the bottom, can you see that one? Hannah has already said that she'd like to sort that out.
Yes, and the Ten Norton, so if I could just have responses, if anyone wants to say anything by tomorrow, how are you fish, if that's possible? And I can put it together.
So the, thank you, Hannah, so the only two we haven't got are the triangular bit.
That one there.
Which I don't think was any concerns, especially-
No, no.
No, it's, it was already on there.
Yeah, and the bit, the bit going further north of that.
That bit there, which is just all pasture land, isn't it, in front of Catlers Park Road.
Do we have any objections there?
Well, there was issues raised about flow or something, or?
No, not that, not there, just that it is agricultural land, so just to know that it is agricultural land.
I think that all these sites are greenfield at the moment, aren't they, apart from, yes, they are.
There is a public footpath that runs across that.
Public footpath runs across there, and it's Dreggleton, yeah. Right, and then those two, you're going to put, you're basically not-
Where is that public footpath?
Runs across from-
So which, just pointed the, the lump red.
Literally, the footpath runs what, about, from about there, across there.
To the road.
And then it comes down here to Eggleton, isn't it?
Yep.
Why double check my answers?
We can't keep losing the project.
So the foot, I mean, the public right away, we'd probably stay there, wouldn't they?
Yeah, it would, but-
It wouldn't be very pretty.
Doesn't make it very interesting.
Okay, uh, we're, we're really all we're doing at this stage is capturing on that.
Yeah, we're just-
One little thing, two things.
And then, Paul, are you happy that, that we, we're not happy about either this one here, which is off?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
We're not happy about-
Dog objects to that yet, to me.
Well done, well done, everybody.
Okay, we're all proposing, so are we proposing anything, or are we just melting?
Well, there's one thing we do have to propose, which is, um, let me just wrap up as we've just done, we've just done a tour of the sites, of the nine sites that have been proposed, and we have agreed, councillors have given some actions on those. And they have to be submitted through Hannah and through me, and so that we can actually submit through the office, using their correct form. Um, the other recommendation is that the Council of Recreation and Planning Committee work to make allocations for housing development in the upcoming neighbourhood plan review, so there will need to be a neighbourhood plan review, and I understand, Adam, that you were instrumental in running the last one?
I wasn't running it, I've got, I'm not looking at it.
Okay.
So as from May, I'm still around, and that's where we'd be doing it from, we can't do it now.
Precisely.
Because we've got perversity in the twenty seconds.
But we need to-
But we need to revisit the neighbourhood plan from June, because, A, because of the local plan, and B, because of this sort of, and C, Barleythorpe are going to split away.
Yeah, I'd like to see that we actually make that recommendation that says that we as a council will be revisiting the neighbourhood, or will be leading the charge with the neighbourhood plan.
Yeah, I'll, what I'll do is I'll put some figures out to the people that are on it.
Nothing to do with it.
Christopher Clark.
Chris Clark.
Yeah, so, yeah, Adam, I don't know who ran it, I just know who-
Chris Clark was the chairman, very good.
He was very good, yeah.
So let's invite Chris to do that then.
Well, I'm going to, what I'll do is I'll put, ping an email over and ask him if he wants to come back on board with it.
And I think they've been much less onerous, council, than last time.
My neighbour's just afraid of playing it.
No, it's not.
It's dreadful.
I've, I've documented this.
You've got my name, clearly there.
Stop arguing, right, stop it out, out of class.
Are we going to rip up, okay, so we, so we are recommending that the neighbourhood plan be revisited.
Yes, we should be in for a review.
And the action is that, who's contacting Christopher Clark?
Oh, I'll contact him.
I don't know.
Adam will contact Christopher, great stuff, so that's, we need to vote on that one, to adopt that.
I'll also, I'll also contact Barleythorpe Parish Council to make them aware.
Yes. Something's not my scope.
Very, very good.
They didn't contribute anything to that.
Okay.
So we vote on that and get that one done and then-
So you proposed that, you seconded it, didn't it? Hannah seconded it. Paul. Seconded by Hannah, all those in favour? You nervous?
They didn't even come to the meeting.
And the second one is that, uh, councillors agree to actually submit, make submissions to Rothercote Council, that's as much as we need to say at this point.
Yeah.
So are we looking at completing this local plan?
Do we need to propose?
The local plan, I think that's a real couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Do, do we need to propose in second, second?
The few councils.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Because you're representing the council in that way. So I'm happy to propose that Paul and Hannah are collating the information back to us, you see, so seconded by Chris.
All those in favour? I'm getting there.
Good stuff. Well, it's a lot harder than I expected because of the software.
Yeah, do apologise.
Not at all.
Okay, eight point five Easter egg hunts. Recently, last year, three or four years, we've done an Easter egg hunt around Pits Close, and we're proposing to do it again this year.
May I, may I add a request? If there is a possibility and it's the, you're on a budget, can you get plastic for eggs?
Go on.
Plastic for the eggs?
Yeah.
No, you're joking.
For the wrapping.
What, that can't, no, not loose eggs.
No, no, for the wrapping, you're talking.
Yeah, so you can get ones that have a lot of plastic, and then ones that have, if it does make any impact on the budget, could we look at trying to reduce the single-use plastic?
We can look at it. No, that, that sounds just completely wrong.
Yeah, so who's going to make it?
But the thing is, we don't always have just an Easter egg, because what we normally have done previously is we've used these cups and we've had lollipops and eggs in them, so that the children can just take them away, rather than having an egg which has got lots of-
They're recyclable.
No, they're recyclable, they're carbon.
They're just carbon, and aligned with plastic?
No, they're, they're carbon.
These, I think these have been brought on purpose for that.
If they're special ones, maybe, but no, the lollipop cups are countercircle, because they're molded together, like hospital ones are counted, so they're molded.
So these were, when we ordered these, we, these were under a recycle thing, so.
Yeah.
So yes, these are recyclable.
Just like the lovely pencils.
So.
So, anyway. So who is happy for us to have an Easter egg hunt?
Let me make a comment.
It wouldn't be an agenda item without a comment for it.
Isn't it, which is very true, um, I'm really happy with this, but I just wish, well, thank you very much for putting a cost up in which budget is going to come out of, I just like that figure. How much is left, what's we spent, seventy five quid, and it's really not necessarily, can't retrospectively implement that, but I just like to make sure that we do that in the future.
What's that?
So that you've got seventy five quid for the event budget, like you've done for the bands.
I'm with you, yes.
And then how much is left?
Yes, well, hopefully, if we get the software sorted in the office, which hasn't been used properly, we will have all these headings with everything. So it's easier to understand, but yes, thank you.
Pleasure.
So I'd like to propose that all councillors are present between eleven and- I can wish, okay, to purchase Easter eggs up to the cost of seventy five pounds, money's to come out of the event budget, I propose it.
So I can do it.
Second, thank you, councillor Envy, all those in favour? Thank you very much, and any help would be appreciated, thank you.
Well, can I confirm, is it on Easter Sunday?
Yes, I did put dates, which is very helpful. Sorry?
What's that, what's that, right?
It's a Sunday.
Something like.
Google.
I was busy doing lots of other things.
It's the ninth of the day, or whatever, is it the ninth? No, yes, I think you're right, thank you.
A month away then. Yes, it's, it's pretty close, that's why I've needed to get that paper in now, because so much to do, right. To consider correspondence receipt, we had a letter from Oakham United Charities, I believe she said Wimbledon since we have this. Have you not got it here?
No.
Yeah, please. I don't really understand, I'm just following or just... We've had a letter from the clerk of the Oakham United Charities that's asked as Oakham Town Council to reappoint members to their
Board of Trustees.
Board of Trustees. Miss Hughes, Mrs Needham, and I believe, I knew where you were. They've got another one, so there's three of them, Julia Glenn.
Was that appointed, wasn't appointed by OGC though?
No.
The, um...
Well, none of them are really, are they?
I'm giving some background on this.
Yes, please.
So, Oakham United Charities is literally united charities, there was a number of charities that were small in their money and their, what they did. So they formed together and formed Oakham United Charities. Their remit is providing support on an educational basis, so they do grant to some students and some elements. Historically, Oakham Town Council would actually have trustees on that, so in actual fact, we're linked to it because it was often two or three Oakham Town councillors that were called as trustees. So it was part of our constitution. Over the years, the gap has widened and now they don't seem to be requiring Oakham Town Council trustees or specifically councillors. So what they're asking for here, because we're still linked through the charity website in some format because of this original agreement, that we're happy that they nominate these people on as their trustees. So to me, it's as simple as that, that they do some good work and we're just sort of saying we have no issue with it. They do the vetting, um, and that's, that's about it.
There's no risk to...
There's no risk to, no, 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 no.
I, 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 sorry.
I, I just think at some point we should probably speak to them again about reviewing the constitution and maybe breaking the ties of the law, we did with the, well, we had the lease of the Victoria Hall, for instance.
It's written into there.
It's written into the constitution that Oakham Town Council trustees.
Right.
That's the reason we have somebody on the Oakham Memorial Institute, which is why we also had somebody on the trustees to the Victoria Hall. It was written into constitutions hundreds, well, hundreds of years ago. So that's why they keep approaching us, because they did approach us some years ago and asked us then with a letter saying, would we be happy to have these people on as their trustees? But they were not councillors.
Yeah, I...
Sorry, you should say that.
I, I want, why do we have the links to this trust?
Why?
Limited charities, is it worth keeping those links going? Should we be, are we happy? And I'm not certain I absolutely am, that we now essentially relinquish all this responsibility within that the United Charity, so I would like to propose that what we do is we have a meeting with them face to face if we feel as a council that we need to better understand what our links are and what benefits there are to the town if we remain involved or not. Really, so should we step away? And I, 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 I dislike the idea that we step away without some kind of consultation to discover. I personally don't know what they really do.
Chairman, can I just help? Because I was on the council when this was an issue and, um, Oakham Town Council were the trustees. But for some reason, it fell apart. And I raised the issue of that because I won't go into all the details because it's already things that were found in places that shouldn't, that's what we're saying. And it was brought to council and Joy Cluff said, I will go away and sort it out. And there was a lady in Leicester who had some keys to the charity. Um, so Oakham Town Council historically, up until that point, had always had control of the charity, even down to the point of financial matters being dealt with in the office, but for some reason, at one point it all went to pot. So I, I think that the town council should still have some involvement in it rather than take it away.
So the first thing is to propose these three people as trustees. Do we want to do that or not?
Joy, Joy Cluff was a councillor at the time she got off the institution. And she's stuck with it even now, she's obviously no longer...
Well, she's going to, she tells me that she's going to decide what she's got.
She sorted the issue right off.
We should talk to them. I really do feel that before we make a decision in council, that we should actually look at their constitution, see where we stand and whether there's any benefit to us and or them, unless we keep remaining involved. If there isn't, then we step away.
Because you're mentioned in the deed, you do have a legal obligation to that charity, you can't just pass it to someone else.
I would like to see that in writing.
Okay, so we're deferring this.
Well, we need someone to go and talk to them.
The next meeting.
Someone to be able to report.
Somebody needs to, Cathy? Needs to talk to Joy.
Does anybody want to step forward?
I thought you were there.
I don't mind, I've just got one or two other things on my plate.
You certainly have, I don't.
Does anyone want to step forward?
Cathy can do it, I mean, that's...
She came to the office.
She won't mind coming in here, I mean, she's in my shop nearly every day, so. You can have that.
Sounds close to home.
No, it doesn't at all. So, well Cathy can make the initial
Yeah, contact.
Contact with her and explain Paul's situation.
I'm happy to speak to her once she's been there.
Well, so because Paul's fine, but he's got an issue with it, so send somebody in that doesn't know what he thinks.
I would do it, madam. I'm not doing this, they've worked together, sadly.
Because there's been a question for you and I asked.
So Cathy gets in touch with Joy and then?
Arranges a meeting where Joy comes in and sees Paul and Cathy.
Yes. Have we, have we got that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
So we're deferring, um, you're organising a meeting with Paul and Joy, so so you know what's going on as well as Paul and everybody, yes? Okay, so I propose that, anybody like to second it?
Do you believe?
Thanks for your contribution, Martin, I'm glad you shut up when you did though.
Right, we have, um, a letter from RCC. I'm going to pass this over to Adam, because I don't really know much about it.
Which is which?
Is this the, uh?
This is the second reminder from RCC.
So we know that we pay a lighting infrastructure charge, don't we?
Yes.
And we know that it goes up by ten percent, five percent every year, so originally it was going up by five percent and then when they sent through their letters, which goes back to November, it got up by twenty-six percent, so instead of paying what we thought was going to be fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty pounds, we got an invoice of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty thousand twelve pence. Um, the, the clerk in line with what we'd budgeted has paid them the fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty pounds, but that's another matter. But potentially, Rutland County Council have now sent a, sent a reminder on the ninth of January, further to our recent reminder, our records still show that you've not paid the invoice detail or the reverse of this letter. Um, so it's up to the council to decide that A, do they want to pay the balance between the twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty twelve and the fourteen six, which is whatever that amount is?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand pounds or thereabouts. Um, or do they want to challenge it and say the Oakham Town Council are ultimately not responsible for the community street lighting recharge?
Cathy next.
Casting my mind back, um, hopefully someone will be able to corroborate this from their memory as well. Uh, that's a contractual, um, percentage based increase, isn't it?
Five percent, Walter.
So how on earth do they...
My understanding from other councils, parish councils, who challenged this, and Ben was supposed to be challenging it but didn't, um, is that the challenge was made and the challenge was basically turned down, so I think, I can't, don't quote me on the parish councils, but I seem to remember Gordon Brown, whoever he's standing for in the parish council, and a few others, county councils who were standing on the parish councils. And the upshot was, it's payable.
No, it's not. Parish council has to agree within the local act to pay it. And if we challenge it, then we don't have to pay it.
It has been challenged though, Adam, that's the thing, and it has been challenged by other parish councils, so if you believe, if your position...
Well, we've not been paying it, we didn't, from when nineteen seventy-four, when this parish council informed, or town council, we never paid it, we were one of the few parish councils that never paid the lighting infrastructure.
The community lighting infrastructure.
And it was an oversight by the local authority to request it and we never agreed to it, so we didn't have to pay it. But then when they did approach us, which is probably going back about ten years, roughly, we agreed that we would pay it on an agreement that it would be X amount, ten thousand pounds plus five percent per year, every year. But this year, because of the catastrophe with bills, they've levied this sixteen percent. So I'm not disagreeing with you, Paul, but the thing is, what happens if next year they come back and go, want another sixteen percent on top? Because all of a sudden, we may as well stop, we may as well fold now and give them the preset back.
Have we got any, um, proof of that original agreement and how long it would have gone on for?
Well, I did a Freedom Improvement Request to Rutland County Council asking for the letter of agreement or the memorandum of understanding that was agreed between Oakham Town Council and Rutland County Council this approximately ten years ago. And they said they have no record of it. If they have no record of it, it means they have no record it was ever going into an agreement, in which case, there is no agreement that says we have to pay the lighting infrastructure.
I, I think, I think, I think you're on...
Thin ice, it is snowing.
I do think you're on thin ice, in that we have been paid fourteen, we certainly paid fourteen thousand, I'm just looking now.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if you go back each year, you did sort of five percent each year, Paul.
I, I'm not, I'm not discussing that, I'm just simply saying that we have historically been paying the community street lighting, so that to me says that we have an obligation to pay. The question is, and the question that was raised, something was supposed to be raised by Ben was raised, because I asked it too, and I think you probably did as well.
Yep.
Was that the charge of twenty-three five hundred was questionable and we wanted a lot more detail about that, and I understand that that was because of a administrative error, but that is just hearsay.
What, they've lost the latte, you mean?
No. About the fact, well, because it should have been, that, that is historical from previous year, that it should have been charged to us and wasn't. And I understand it was challenged by some of the parish councils, well, I see no reason at all where we cannot, we have paid fourteen thousand...
Six hundred and fifty.
Six hundred and fifty, and I think that we're looking for no reason at all, we don't draft a letter back to RCC asking for clarification of why it's gone up from fourteen six fifty.
Well, yes, okay. The concern is, is if they turn and go, well, it's the energy costs, potentially that means next year we could be paying thirty-eight thousand. And here, and that is then...
Yeah, well, I think we have an obligation to pay the community street lighting charge and unfortunately we're in a conurbation and therefore...
If we make this payment, if we do the payments, if we pay the balance because of this reminder, we should do it with a letter strictly stating that this does not make us to sell that we're going to pay again next year. Because otherwise we open this council up to huge bills.
And yeah, I, I I think we are, we should be paying what we contractually obliged to pay. What has been agreed, which is certainly not as obvious, as per my understanding, twenty-nine thousand or whatever.
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-three thousand, sorry. Um, if, you know, if it should be an increase of five percent based on last year's and fourteen thousand is the number, then that is the number.
Do we have any copy of this letter?
I asked for it also, I did a Freedom Improvement Request here, but they don't have it, but could you?
It should be on the minutes because I was on the counselling, because it, to get the, yeah, to get the time, it would be when Tony Mophiass was the leader of the county council, because he came to see us and said if we didn't pay it, they would have no lighting in Oakham.
They said they wouldn't maintain the lights and when they stopped working it would be ours.
Oh, no, he said he would switch them off. And I got told off for going public on it.
So what you're saying then, what we do is we write to Rutland County Council and say, where, where we believe it's five percent, why would we pay more?
It'd be on the minutes because we agreed that.
And I think we should explain that we have, you know, we're due to internal circumstances, we are going to reply, but yes, that what we want is clarification as to why it's jumped from fourteen thousand.
So the proposal then, in response to this letter, is we write to Rutland County Council saying, thank you very much, we have paid our contractually agreed amount of X plus five percent per year, can you please explain why it is this amount? Or what we thought was X plus five percent, so we're not too argumentative.
I do, they probably agree, it's just that they can charge what they want, when they want.
We know what we're going to say. Um, in the meantime, we need then, cameras out, we need to dig out our minutes because they're not easy to find. Um, there is documented proof of what was agreed in the contract and and lack of mine too, all the time. Um, because it did happen, I didn't read it.
That you didn't show it there.
So yes, so that's the proposal then.
So I can just clarify, what your position is?
I'm set there.
Uh, is that you believe that we've got a five, we've fourteen thousand blah blah plus five percent is what we contractually obliged, and you believe anything excessive that is outside our arrangement?
It's not been, it's not been agreed by council. Yes.
I, but it's outside of our arrangement, so what we're really asking is that we, you know, we're reminded that we have in fact paid our there is no obligation, fourteen thousand, whatever.
Yeah.
And that we, uh, would like an explanation as to why it has gone up to twenty-three thousand.
Yeah.
That's all we have to say at this point, isn't it? We have to...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Adams, please.
Can I just, Cathy, can I just read back to you what it is we aren't going to be proposing? Not the exact figures, but...
All right, okay, so the lighting infrastructure was fourteen thousand six hundred, was paid by the clerk. So we now have an invoice for twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty, so we want to understand why the balance of nine thousand, really, and is outside of our contractual five percent increase.
Yeah, I think we...
And challenge the recharge. But ten years ago, it was agreed five percent.
You don't have anything to tell about that.
I, I, I think it's going to be short shrunk for the point, I think you should be saying...
I should just say that bit at the top.
Yeah, fourteen, twenty-three, why?
We should, okay, why, yeah, I did.
We paid this invoice on what we were expected to pay.
And do we want to put a little caveat about our circumstances in that?
Well, we've got the money.
Just to say, because they had threatened that they're going to take further action, we've got, haven't we?
That'd be fine, yeah.
They always do that.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I just think it's worthy of just a simple note that says, brilliant, thanks very much, how many people's here?
You could, you could put in there, there's been some, um, some staff change at council and there's, uh, court delay, I was just trying.
Yes.
Do we have documentary evidence that we have paid?
We need...
Yes.
Essentially that we got paid, we have paid X amount plus five percent.
Well, it should be in your office somewhere.
If it is, that's, that would be an excellent source of progress.
I wouldn't want to go and look for it, if I want.
So can you just read that back to me just please, just for my peace of mind?
Just that, that top, right? Lighting, the invoice for the lighting infrastructure, fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty was paid by the clerk. The invoice for twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty is outside of our budget or our remit. We're going to check on our payment trail, we've got circumstances in the office regarding staff changes. So I either pick up the phone and talk to somebody.
No, later.
Right, right.
Or email.
Email.
This is not a conversation.
Okay.
I'd like to see it up.
I'll make sure you see it.
But also I'd like actually to be onhanded that paper coming from us.
Oh, absolutely.
And attached to an email.
Yeah.
As a word document or PDF if appropriate.
I can have the wording made on the visiting content.
Okay, so Admiral has proposed, seconded all those now, are we seconded?
We are.
Okay, all those in favour?
Excellent, carried.
Right, finances and governance issues, over to you again. I'd just like to thank Adam, who's been working very hard for the council, trying to sort out our finances and such likes.
What I've done is, there's a folder which is going to be in the office, which is available to councillors at the moment, uh, for sure, probably available to other people with the appropriate requests being put in, because this is a public document, I would suggest. Uh, to help clarify, um, I had to, I felt it was appropriate to do some due diligence and make sure that was appropriate resilience in place for our situation, so I looked at a number of things. So to explain, we've got a Cambridge Sabre account which had sixty thousand pounds in it and that generated interest each year, automatically the interest comes into our current account. Everything so far points to the fact that the sixty thousand pound Cambridge account is, um, is still in effect and we had a statement in December that showed all this and showed the interest. And we can see on our banker statements, the interest coming over into the current account, so there's no concerns with that. Then we also have a charity account which is held at the HSBC and the council had resolved to close this, it currently has a balance of forty-seven pence in it. Uh, because it's a charity account and because of the change in circumstances of the HSBC and their charity accounts that they managed or they used to offer, they now charge a five pound fee per month. And because this account has not been used for a number of months, because these fees came into operation um, to us from November, in November, December and January, we received five pound charges to reach those months. However, the HSBC have been very honourable and very, um, um, correct in their banking procedures and they've automatically credited the five pound charge back. So whereas potentially we could be fifteen pounds in debt to the HSBC, we're still only forty-seven pence in credit. Um, just on, on the HSBC, I have written to the, so I did go into HSBC and ask for a closure form because we had agreed as a council to do that. And they gave me the closure paperwork and there's two signatories, myself and a former councillor who is left in council, obviously because they're former, which is part of that statement. I don't want to say that. Um, that former councillor has refused to have anything to do with the council now and refuses to sign it. So at the moment, we've got to find a way to close the account, so anticipating that rather than sit idle and wait for a resolution, I simply penned an email or asked the clerk, deputy clerk, we email the, or write to the HSBC asking how can we close the account with any one signatory? Do we need a resolution by council, for example? So that will come back.
It might be that they just add, add a second signature.
They might do, but you need, you need the, you need the two signatories to add another signatory. So if it's, if two people don't sign, you can't add something. So it's a bit of a chicken in an egg. Um, so it, it certainly highlights the resilience of having at least three people signing accounts. Uh, we have a deposit account which is once again with the HSBC, so when we get our preset from Rutland County Council, that normally goes into the HSBC. So we checked that on the first of March twenty twenty-three and there was a hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and fifteen and eight pence in there. Um, there was a hundred thousand pounds transferred out in month ten. We're now in month twelve because March is the last month of the year. So a couple of months ago, a hundred thousand pounds was transferred from there. So there was two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fif, four hundred and forty-five, a hundred thousand came over to the current account. Uh, so that, so the balance in that account is still a hundred and fifty thousand pounds. That will go up when the preset for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four goes into it. The reason a hundred and fifty thousand pounds was transferred out into the current account is the current account is the one that we pay all our bills in, so hence there's all these statements and, and documents that show where we pay bills. Um, and it had reached such a level, I think around about twenty thousand pounds, where the clerk needed that money to be able to keep paying bills. On the first of March twenty twenty-three, the, the standing balance at the HSBC on the current account was ninety-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three pounds and twenty-five pence. Um, and I've since gone through and actually taken it, I, I printed off, asked the deputy clerk to print off all the bank statements going back for the whole of the year, back to the first of April twenty twenty-two. And I printed off all the ledgers, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven of the current account, so I could actually do a manual reconciliation. Because in fact, what we've discovered is that some of our reconciliations that we've been, thought we'd been presented with have not been presented fully incorrectly, let's say. Um, and for that reason, I felt that I should do due diligence. The only error or concern that I found so far on there is that on the realtors accountants in software, there appears to be a hundred and eighty pounds paid out, but it hasn't been paid out of the current account. What that would be, that when we come to the end of the year, there would be a hundred and eighty pounds out, but we'd be a hundred and eighty pounds richer. That's what I found, but I would ask that when we get a Logan Plan in or somebody knows more about this system than I do, they check that. Um, I also reviewed the petty cash, but the petty cash is not a bank account, it's a, for want of a better phrase, it's a cash book or a virtual accounting system. This is where we had got a problem, where it'd been reported that there was money missing earlier on in the year and the, the depth of that was not truly known by the council. What it is, is that at the beginning of the year, there was, um, two hundred and five pound and forty-three pence in the petty cash thing. Um, in month one, which was April twenty twenty-two, there'd been some receipts actioned on realtors. So you still action the payment on the accounting software for each month of the year and that shows the petty cash going down. If you don't enter them on realtors, your money goes down, but the petty cash says you've still got money in there, the realtor says you've still got money in there. In month one, there was eighty pounds and twelve pence of transactions entered onto our accounting software. Because people had not been updating the receipts for petty cash transactions onto Realta's software, at a point in the year, which was month five, the clerk at the time requested a payment, an additional cheque of two hundred and forty pounds from the current account to top of the petty cash tin. That brought the total of the petty cash to four hundred and forty-four, four hundred and forty-five pounds and forty-three pence. All of the petty cash tickets that had not been entered onto Realta's, Paul and I went through it on the other evening, and he asked if I could enter them all onto Realta's, so that Realta's would then balance what was in the tin. I'd put all of the tickets onto the system, and that came to a hundred and ninety-six pounds and a penny, which basically, and there was eleven pounds fourteen pence in cash found in the office. I bound that at the HSBC, because the council had agreed not to hold any cash in the office a couple of months ago. So that money's now in the bank, but unfortunately means that the closing balance on the Realta's software shows that there should be a hundred and sixty-nine pounds and thirty pence in cash in the office, and there isn't. So that means that the council is missing a hundred and sixty-nine pounds and thirty pence. Now, receipts could have been lost, there could have been genuine reasons for why that's occurred, but the bottom line is, is that the council will have to make a resolution to write off that hundred and sixty-nine pounds and thirty pence at some point. I, Realta said that they can close down the petty cash account on the Realta's software. I said I have no power to do that, and I have to wait for a resolution from council. And once again, I'd rather wait till a qualified clerk comes in, a Logan clerk, to check that what I've seen is accurate. But the situation of the accounts is that they're sound. We, I did sit with Realta's and they taught me through reconciling month eleven, which was last month, and that was spot on with the bank account. And Paul, you'd seen a copy of that, because that was all the little red squares on it. Uh, it didn't make a lot of sense to me. It probably didn't make too much sense to you. But all the invoice, sorry, all the bank statements, there's a full run of all the payments, is all in this folder. So anybody who wants to come and have a look at it, they can come and have a look at it. All of the work has been done here, it's been done with the request and with the knowledge of the chairman, and often in the presence of deputy clerk, and some of it has been observed by Paul. And that's what we said.
Can I just add a few words in that?
Yeah, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank Adam for all the hard work that he's done, and to put it all together. Um, what we were trying to achieve is that essentially, I, I felt we had three things to achieve. One was that we reconcile the bank statements, the bank statements from HSBC against the accounting system, Realta's, so that we can, and also, this should include expenditure against individuals and companies, because it wasn't always clear how much we'd spent against each individual or companies. Um, secondly, that we should re- reconcile each venture against the budget. Now, that's certainly, uh, something that we will be doing. We are a little bit high bound because of the nature in which some of the payees have been entered. So for example, you might see payments to Benjamin Tassel, and it'll be B Tassel, Benjamin Tassel lower case, Benjamin Tassel upper case, and a whole series of things. So it actually makes it quite difficult to reconcile, but that is something to work in forward. And the third thing was that we should be reconciling the, uh, petty cash that Adam has largely finished, I think.
Yeah.
And, um, but until we get a responsible financial officer in to actually make sure the enthusiastic steps have been taken here to make sure that we have.
I, I don't know Realta's. I've, I've never used it before. I'm, I'm not an accountant, but it's a very user-friendly system. It's quite intuitive. And to clarify what you just said there, Paul, um, so we're using, um, Lee, 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 our handy person, he's entered on the payments list, because he gets some expenses back when he's forced off the council. There's actually, um, he's down as a different supplier, one, two, three, four, four different Lee, Lees on here, because of the spelling of the name has been entered wrong. And if you enter it wrong, it then separates it out, but it's in theory, and that's where it becomes confusing. So this is why if you do want to come in and look at this, I, I would encourage you to, you would look through it. It actually makes perfectly good sense.
I've been through it. I think we both agree that we don't believe there's, uh, I don't care what we say, but I don't think there's a matter of amount missing. There is, there are some discrepancies which we.
There's some very sloppy, very sloppy procedures, but nothing that I would get over, I mean, a hundred and sixty-nine pounds and thirty pence over what is, after fact, is a long period of time, is not acceptable. But I, well, I'm not asleep over it, because I'm a woman, I pay my council.
So the hundred and sixty-nine thirty, we can definitely identify, but we need the RFO to actually ensure that you've actually turned away now. So once that's done, there'll obviously be a report back to council.
And.
At that year end.
And then, yeah, and also we were discussing the fact that with the new council next year, that A, looking at, do we keep on with Cambridge, which is, that's a bigger picture thing. One thing that I was going to do, um, is actually got a copy of all the different headings, but different things like tools or grounds maintenance against all the sub-budgets, because in that fact, they all need tidied up, and that's all that is. So I'm going to put that into a spreadsheet for the finance committee meeting, which you're going to call, aren't you, at some point?
Yes, there's been a point in the midst of chaos calling a finance meeting. We need a certain degree of certainty. Once we've got an RFO, we're good.
So I'll say, if anybody's got any questions, I will be pleased to hear them, but I can't guarantee I can answer them. Thank you. And there's nothing to reconcile this month, because wherever I have done the reconciliation with Realta's on January, I would rather wait for an RFO to come in and do it properly, because I'm not an RFO.
Well, we have published, we have certainly published the, um, Spanish for this month on the website.
Yes, well, yes, we did.
The council accounts.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so there's nothing to.
Just, just a report.
No, it's noted, just noted.
An update from last.
Right, number eleven, toilet block.
Look it here. This is your paper.
It's me. Uh, SDC have had an accessibility audit done by an independent body for their car parks. Because the surround of the toilet block on Church Street is within the realm of OTC's licence, they've been sent following observations to earth, uneven paving to the north side of the WC block, cracked and uneven paving, lack of drop curve, tactile paving at the entrance and exit of the site. Um.
No, 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 but there is, like, oh, sorry, again, there is.
This was, uh, brought to council in the last twelve months, and it was agreed that we would go out and get, um, a quote as to how much this would cost. Unfortunately, it was never followed through on the clerk. So we're having to go through it all again so that now we need to ask the deputy clerk to check out the prices of how much it would cost. I know there was talk at the last meeting that we might just.
Tarmac it.
Tarmac. Sure.
Tarmac it.
Might tarmac it rather than putting slabs down. Um, whether it's worth us getting a price for both options and see which way we go. Can I just? Yeah. Comment on the fact that round, um, Westgate, you know my gripes about that and how things have been. But I have to say, they've recently tarmac the offending area where we had all the water and things, and they have made a very good job of it, and outside Rookham Town. So, you know, that's, it's so much safer for everyone.
Was that probably the other council did that, really?
Well, it was part of, of the council, yes, yeah. So I propose the deputy clerk goes out and prices up the repairs as listed. What?
Um, I'd like to suggest, sorry, sorry, it's more work for you, Kathy, but I would like to suggest, uh, three different work.
I've never understood the toilets. The council paid for them and then leases them from Rookham County Council. And they pay business rate.
So it should be, you're right.
So your proposal was to get three quid on the.
Three top. So my proposal is to go out, get some prices for tarmac in or slabbing the. Area that had been watched out.
Do we have a prepared contractor?
No.
That's something we should have looked for in the future, isn't it?
I can't, I can't remember who did this, but I know they've made a good job of that in the ultimate.
So do I have a second?
I, I will second that, because even if they tarmac it, they will still have to put down tactile, because actually people would.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll happily second that, uh, with a caveat, but would it be okay that I assist the deputy, they identify some contractors because her workload has increased with the absence of those part?
Yep, that would sound good to me. Thank you, Adam. Okay, so all those in favour? Lock them off. Oh, King's Coronation. Very important. This year, King Charles the Third will be crowned, and the celebration weekend in Oakham will be heralded. On the fourth of May, the Rookham Times will be adding an eight-page pull-out and keep supplement. Contents will include children's drawings of King Charles the Third, local events, et cetera, et cetera. They have asked us if Oakham Town Council would like to put an advert in advertising the events that are planned over the King Coronation Weekend. Um, and they quoted us for five centimeters by twenty-six, eighty pounds plus the eighteen. And this would come out of the coronation budget.
We, we don't actually have a price, but I know which one you mean.
Inappropriate, would you?
Yes.
Yeah.
But if we're.
But we did have, we had got a certain amount.
Around a thousand pounds at the side, this year.
Yes.
We just wasn't called that.
Well, it's on the.
Well, I apologise.
It's on the.
No, it's on the.
Um, so was it, can I just clarify, is it a thousand pounds for the military events that we've engaged the coronation?
Yes.
As we've spent so far.
Well, the military.
Eight hundred and fifty.
One hundred thousand pounds?
Yes.
But that included this eighty quid here.
No.
Plus nine thirty then. So if seventy pounds left, don't go wild.
Seventy pounds, yeah.
Whatever.
It will be the first time I've got up the ladder to put something up.
You know, you're.
We just need to go to more volunteers, don't we?
Because you're not supposed to call the ladder, because it's not the house.
I don't mean the ladder, but the town will have to get together with all of us. She can't do it. I don't know. Okay, so we are planning a big, well, not just us, but your lieutenant is planning that big event over that three-day event. Um.
Some people are impressed by that.
There's probably going on. Saturday, what's happening on Saturday? That isn't it, Lee? That's the actual King's Coronation.
Yes.
Is it? On Saturday?
Yeah, that's why she wanted the event on the seventh.
On the.
And then on the Sunday, we're having an event in.
Uh-huh.
The park, which includes, um, a church service beforehand. And then on the Monday, not part of Oakham Town Council, but there is an event going to be held at the, uh, the showground, and it's going to be a large car boot, um, raising money for, um, the, the, no, it's not for the statues, it's for the food bank.
And it's back to the community.
Basically, it's going back into.
It's Rookham County, isn't it?
Yeah.
Sounds fine.
Four of them. No, it's, um, the.
I'm glad I've got friends living in a garden party.
That is four under connected to.
Yes.
Save them to.
There's too many four of them, four of them.
There's four of them.
Anyway, so do we want to go ahead with advertising our event?
Would it be worthwhile just looking at the next item and asking whether that's in the same budget as well?
It would.
No.
It'd be worth asking.
No, that's going to be coming out of, have we decided that's coming out of? We weren't looking at it coming out of reserves for this year that we haven't spent.
I think it's.
Sign off the coronation.
Yes, we should. Well, that's why I did them on separate papers. So first of all, for the advert in the Rookham Times to advertise our events over that coronation weekend, for eighty pounds plus the eighteen, I propose, do we have a second one?
Yeah.
Thank you, council. All those in favour? Lock them off. Okay, thank you. Right, so then we've got the bunting, which.
Just buy bunting.
Yes, just buy bunting. Red white and blue.
Will be grounded with something that would mean the bunting.
The trouble is with bunting, that you can't really use it again, because once it's been up for three or four months, it gets very torn, very.
Weathered.
Weathered, that's a good word, weathered. And also you have the big Tesco's, Wilco's trucks pulling down certain bits, and then it starts to look tatted.
It's quite a lot of money for something that they're always going to get big.
We have.
Last year's didn't get big.
We had put bunting up before.
Given to a school to use.
Okay.
So it wasn't totally big.
We have, we have, we have re, we have put bunting up before. We have reused it. But the quality of the bunting coming out these days does not seem to be resilient. We also used to use the wire, the wire strings that used to be left up. So a previous contractor used to attach it to a wire, so that way it was, it was stronger.
And the good thing about this, um, trival winter is it's actually twenty metre length. So for the guys putting it up, sorry, fifty metre length. So for the guys putting it up, they used to buy short ones when they had to keep tying it together, where this is fifty metres long.
I mean, if you didn't want to have bunting in the town, then this is the time to say, no bunting up in the town.
My question, I've got a question. Does this, these charges include?
No.
No, this is just purchase of.
This is just purchase.
So there's a dislocation to come on top of this.
Then there will be more cost to put them up, which will probably be coming around to about eighteen.
Is there some sort of. Is there a component of that source? That's the way all of this goes, and has it been sort of measured up to a point?
Yeah, we used to say.
So did last year's, which looked pretty good.
Yeah.
Adam's looking through his.
I was just going to get a rough eye, because in here it says how much we, we paid last year, to put it up.
And one budget.
It's about nine hundred pounds.
Yeah, it was like about one.
Where are you supposed to get the money from for this?
To put the bunting up.
What, to put the bunting, about to purchase the bunting?
Oh, to buy it.
And to take it down. It's eight hundred pounds, put it up at eight hundred pounds and take it down, isn't it? Sixteen hundred.
So I make.
Well, I'm open to suggestions as to where we get the money.
I'll prove it and just take it down.
Was your original suggestion that it came from reserves, as we've not got some budget to comment for it, but we're not that understanding.
I think we've blown the budget, don't we? They've raised fifty quid already, blown on the coronation for something other, don't know what that was for.
Music.
For the music.
Coronation.
Eight fifty for the music then, and then we've just voted eighty quid, haven't we? And now we've got approximately four thousand six hundred, what we're taking up and taking down the bunting. So that blows that initial budget for this year up the water. Doesn't think we shouldn't do it, we just have to vote to take it from reserves.
It's not every year you're going to need kings.
Identified, that'd be the thing.
Or is it?
Well.
No, it's not. We had the jubilee last year, we can't keep having things coming up.
Well, we, I mean, it has been commented that our reserves are still quite high. Um, even Brooklyn County Council, by the way, it's.
I'd like to put a limit to what we think we're going to be spending. Do you have a figure for that, that one? I'm saying that we've got about five thousand quid already, haven't we? So do you have a figure in your head? Sorry, I don't know if you think we should put it, I'd like to put a cap on it.
It's not all of our reserves, is it?
Uh, I'll pop my side of the punch, yeah. Say fifty.
Well, I think it's our way, but we can actually give us one thousand four hundred and forty-two thousand forty-three plus the eighteen for those bits. And then we're saying eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred.
One thousand eight hundred.
About fourteen forty, is it, for the planting? And there, there's two items here, the college and banners, plus the.
I mean, up and down was one thousand six hundred.
Yes, it was. So I've got an estimate of about five and a half k, but I wonder whether that's as much as you want to. Do we need to come back again? Do we need to come back again? Three, six, plus, three plus four, six, plus eight fifty.
The V A T, you'll get, you can pay back.
Yeah, I know. I'm asking. We should be setting a budget of about five and a half K on this to draw down from reserves for the coronation, but if that's not enough, are you thinking of additional events and or expenditure?
No, this is just good events.
Yeah.
But are you thinking of there's gonna be more expenses, what I'm asking? Should we be voting, for example, for seven and a half K when we actually go to, we go to, so we're actually seeing seven and a half K, there's a bit ahead of him, isn't there? We're planning events.
Because I'm assuming we're advertising something, we'll be doing, we'll be doing the, the advertising, yeah.
There's no need to, but we could just approve this.
So should we just, go on, uh, come on.
Well, I will suggest that we, although we know the expenditure that we just took up is around five and a half K, that we actually allow a maximum budget seven thousand five hundred pounds and then you come back and tell us what the expenditure's been on.
That's what comes to.
So essentially revised budget then of seven and a half K.
Yes.
For the King's Coronation.
Precisely. That takes into account expenses on the bands, which was eight hundred and fifty, for the advertisements, which was another eighty, so that's nine thirty. Plus what we just took up here, which I, I came up with, uh, taking up, taking down all the bunting and stuff.
Is three, two, three, three point four.
What's that again?
Three thousand two hundred and thirty-three pounds and forty pounds.
Not, not with the sixteen hundred that we've got of taking up, taking down.
Yeah, I have to blame.
Okay, well, if you, uh.
You know, did you get A T on that?
No, I have, oh, right, okay.
Well, now, if, if we look at the figures here, so if we look at the King's Coronation bunting for the town, that's what, that total, those total figures, three figures there are, one, two, five, one fifteen. We then look at the King's Coronation banners, which is two times twenty, forty, forty, blah, 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 with hundred ninety-one pounds, you add those together, you get forty, forty. Yeah.
Yep.
And then we said we want to add on the, uh, sixteen hundred for taking up, taking down, did we not?
Yeah.
That's a three thousand, done. We've said we've already spent eight fifty on bands. And we just, it also has another eighty quid for advertisements.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm just saying that, uh, lost tracking the numbers. So let's say I've got it four and a half. I think that we should give you some room and say that the maximum expenditure would be seven thousand five hundred pounds on the coronation.
Coming from reserves.
Yes.
And I'm gonna share that I, I'm massive killjoy, I don't like seeing we use plastic, um, so I'm just gonna put that out there as well.
Okay.
So that's my personal, I'm sure lots of people love it and it does look nice, but personally, I just worry about the.
Yeah, well, there's so many more people in your league, the younger people anyway, that group would have been. But also I think, right, so Paul, you're proposing, I'm proposing, no, you're proposing, the seven thousand five hundred.
Is your maximum.
Is maximum expenditure on the coronation.
Based on what you presented tonight, I mean, you can go and look for more things, though. Is that correct?
Well, no, we, we, we know that the challenge is five and a half, and this is basically we're saying here's another two K, that if we need to, to make sure that we actually get a reasonable celebration for the. Next month, they'll be asking for five grand for giving something to the school kids. This is what we're allowing me to do, yeah?
Yep.
Is that coming up this year or next year?
I guess the government probably does that, eh?
Well, actually, it's a sense, no?
Yes. Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, so if you order it now, you're not at that which I'm asking, yeah.
So do we want to vote on that? Um.
Who's proposing? Can you just confirm what's proposing?
Have we, have we allowed seven thousand five hundred, was it?
Yes.
Seven thousand five hundred for the King's Coronation in Tullow.
I'm worried about bringing new papers because we've said that's the cap and as long as it stays, we need that.
We'll just break down everything that we spent so that you know what we've spent it on.
That's a half a cheque.
So we, um, I'm not gonna be on council this time because I've said, but proposing. I'll say anything, I'll second it.
All Chris has answered.
Oh, Chris!
No, no, I've put Chris's name down.
No, Chris, then I'm not being told. Okay, all those in favour? One, two. You've got me in favour, though. Right, okay, that's, um, you know.
You know us.
Right. Number thirteen is an exempt item to consider the following resolution. That in the view of the confidential nature of the following agenda out of the present public be excluded from this meeting in accordance with public bodies. Nineteen sixty, section one.
I just wanna figure out what the confidential nature was, because it always says on the paper whether we're gonna be on the agenda. Whether we're gonna be alone.
Costumes.
It's never been confidential in the past.
Well, we don't have to have it confidential.
No, just, well, let's, let's put it to the vote, whether it should be confidential or not. It's on the agenda, isn't it? It shows up on the accounts anyway.
It wasn't on, but.
I don't know, okay.
The last time it was discussed.
Okay, so I'm proposing that it's extent, do I have a second one? Cancel Ainsley, we're proposing to. Kick out the press.
So that's the.
And public.
So that's the proposal to have to vote?
Yes, so those in favour are. Yes. Cancel Ainsley and myself. Okay, those in favour of a closed session? Oh, no!
No, nothing votes.
I don't think we're telling you what I have to say yet.
All right, those.
Against.
Against.
I'm gonna go against it. I think it's in the interest of the public, there's nothing, there's nothing, yeah, confidential, so that goes to the casting board.
Okay, all right, let's talk about it for everybody then.
Just call all the other people in.
Yeah.
Yeah. All those ones that you kept out there. Right, basically.
I'm gonna be naughty. Don't let them stay in the Wisteria Hotel this time, even though it was very nice there. You've got, you've got the travel lodge in Melton, whatever it is.
Okay, as we have, you know, full-time clerk employed, we need to look at the possibility of engaging a local clerk. This is a trained clerk, but it's only a temporary thing. I'm not mentioning any names. As we are approaching year end, the annual town meeting and the elections, I believe this would be a lot for the deputy to deal with alone. So ideally, I'd like to employ a local clerk for two days a week and to agree possible travelling expenses, but no accommodation because we got stung last time when we had a loan from, as Martin's pointed out. Um, so there would be no money spent on accommodation, but obviously maybe we'd need to take in travelling expenses.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask a question.
So the proposal is that we engage a local clerk for two days a week to get us through the end of the financial year because there will be some difficulty recruiting a, hopefully somebody else. No travel, uh, to include travel expenses, not include accommodation. This would be somebody that is S L C registered and is recommended as a local clerk.
Yes, I need somebody who knows what they're doing.
Um, as long as it's within a, a cap hourly rate, cap hourly rate of no more than twenty-five pounds an hour.
Okay, yeah, is everybody happy with that?
I'm looking at, I know, I know what S L C C normally charge, that would be, that's what they were charging before. I would, I would support your proposal.
Okay. Have you got that?
But that's so, but now you can open it up to the debate.
Anybody else like to make any comments?
I think that's, but it's also a necessity and I'm fully support.
I mean, I'm looking at the two days being like the Tuesday that Cathy's not in the office and the Wednesday when we've got meetings that things need to be prepared. Um.
Got a couple of questions?
Yep.
How, uh, I think it's important to be sure that this individual has actually got, has got experience with it as being an RFO.
Yeah.
I think that's really important. And I also, I think we need to decide whether, how much we're going to allow to be working in the office and how much we're going to allow working in these modern days. Or working remotely, let's put it that way.
I think the two days that we're proposing will be done in the office. If there is anything on top of that, then we'll have to look into maybe paying overtime or what do you wanna call it?
Well, that's something we should lay out right now, isn't it? That we are, we're looking for two days in the office and we're looking for any additional time, um, to be agreed in advance, particularly the rate, I think that's really important. I can't see why they want to get overtime, as you put it. At the same rate, but it could perhaps be looked at to do remotely, something along those lines.
You, I mean, the two days could be that the main thing is that they, I think they need to be here to go through the realtors because that's on the hard drive here. So there's, and, I mean, if I managed to get what I did there, that took me, um, ten hours of work over three days. And if you're getting a clerk that's previously been here, which I believe that you're looking at, then they will know realtors as well and they'll know our software. So in fact, there is an opportunity there where if we're engaging them for two days, they can do one day here and one day remote. And that would be the worst case scenario.
The longer weeks that we've not got meetings, then there's no reason why.
Would there be no meetings as well? Would it be doing the Wednesday night meeting?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, because I'm thinking that, uh, deputies more than capable of minoting a meeting.
Yes.
And we're hands-free to get through the end of the year. That's the primary function here.
Yes.
So we're also looking at time scale, aren't we? So I think that if we, that original, what we just said a minute ago, the, the two days, as long as we don't incur ridiculous other expenses, travelling expenses is acceptable. Um, but to accommodate the flexible working approach with one day on-site to do the realtors, if needs be one day um, working from home, that helps actually cut down on travelling expenses. So, but also what time scale are we looking at? When would the bunting start? We know, or how long would we keep them for?
I want to notice what we need to give them to say we found someone. We, we know we need your.
Because you, we needed the handover last time.
Yeah, we did a month's handover.
So, yeah, I think it was a month at least.
I think our critical period needs to take us through the year end, isn't it?
Yes, it does, so you're looking at, um, all of April and possibly all of May, and I would think you're probably looking at June as well. Because when I'm, we go out to advertise and get some bunting, we could potentially be looking at three months. So that's, um, that's eight, twenty-four days of, of somebody's work. I, I support your proposal still that we get an opening for two days and that we're mindful of at least one day in the office because of the hardware.
Yep.
Yeah, proposing. I think the paper's sort of proposing it, I can't, I can't see that. The proposal gets from you for two days. It wasn't made yet, I just read what was on the paper. Um, with a, with a maximum hourly rate, it's a suggested hourly rate of twenty-two fifty, which is also be recommended by S L C C's guidelines, isn't it? Uh, with those travelling expenses.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd second that proposal.
Thank you. All those in favour? Rock and roll. Get on phone and everybody's watching tomorrow.
Are we, are we, are we, are we advertised for a?
Not yet.
When, 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 when our staff is gonna come to another meeting, yeah?
Yeah.
Is that us talking?
Yeah.
I'm happy to do benchmarking services and these.